All right. So I can just set this here?
Yep.
And then just go through it. Okay, cool.
(inaudible)
Patrick, that, what, 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 way to set a record. Just want you to know that.
Just, you know, real quick.
Just now?
That's the way to do it, get it on the challenge.
Welcome to our October 23, 2012 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. We will begin by reviewing items in preparation for our Thursday night Town Council meeting. By way of assignment, if the council could accept the following. Councilmember Cooper, if you could introduce the scouts. Councilmember Ray, if you could do the pillar of the month citizenship. Councilmember Daniels will be joining us shortly, if she could do 2A and 2B. Agenda item number three. Councilmember Cook, there is no one who will be here to receive that. And...
He's done this to me twice now.
So if you could take this and maybe just make reference that this proclamation was prepared and do it in 15 seconds or less. To agenda item number four, extra mile day. Councilmember Peterson, if you could do that one. There's no one coming to receive it, and I think this gives you the chance to talk about Make a Difference Day last Saturday.
Give it to yourself?
And to summarize, yeah, give it to yourself, Councilmember Cooper. The proclamation for Arizona League Cities and Towns, accepting that will be Ken Strobeck. And I also have down Councilmember Cooper, if you could do scouts and double duty.
Okay.
And maybe summarize that and then present the proclamation to Ken Strobeck. Agenda item 5A, which is our Veterans Day. Vice Mayor Sence.
Yes, sir.
And you will, I see that we have someone to receive that, and that will give you a chance also to talk about Veterans Day activities at Town Hall, at Higley Unified School District, at the parade in Mesa.
All three.
Thank you. Any questions about the assignments? In looking at the agenda items for Thursday, Councilmember Cooper, what items do you have that you'd like to talk about today?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, are we limiting to the consent on this?
That's the preferred consent administrative, but if, as we've said, if there is something in the public hearing that at least by asking a question can help in preparation, knowing that we'll have a review on Thursday.
Mayor, I don't have any on the consent.
Vice Mayor Sence? Councilmember Cook?
He's in shock.
11, 13, 16, and 17. But mine will be short questions.
Councilmember Ray?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Let's start with 11.
Is it Chief here? Oh, Kim, okay.
Good afternoon.
So my quick question on this particular agenda is, I was actually looking for the reason for the waiver. And I'm not too sure I read that in the communication.
Well, with Entrado, they're actually a sole source item for us because Entrado, Entrado provides our 911 architecture or equipment that handles our 911 calls. We're, Gilbert as an agency is a member of a consortium of a large, in the Greater Phoenix area, and we're all under Maricopa Regional 911. So as far as Entrado goes, we have Entrado equipment based on what the rest of the consortium does. In this particular case, we're just trying to match existing equipment because these are two new additional positions that were previously approved under a CIP. So we're trying to match the existing equipment that we have. And then as participants in a consortium, we all have Entrado equipment.
And this is, their equipment is on state contract? Is that how we originally?
It is, and it's actually negotiated and, or, you know, the purchase actually is handled at the county level through the Maricopa Regional 911. In this case, because we're adding two new positions, we bear the installation cost for the initial setup going forward. So next year, when it comes time to pay the Entrado or the 911 bill, that's actually paid by our consortium parent, which is Maricopa 911, the regional consortium. We don't pay our 911 fees after this point.
Well, thank you for clearing that up for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on 11? Thank you. Councilmember Cook, I had listed 13, 14, and 15. You've got 16. And 13, 14, 15 all tie together?
Yes.
I thought it would be helpful to get that quick overview, so...
And I'm just looking for the overview.
Will that be Lou or Mark that will do that? Lou, please.
Mayor, Lou Anderson. Number 13, specifically...
And you might, Lou, you might just take 13, 14, 15 together and give the council the overview.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, currently, the town of Gilbert's hauling about 120,000 tons of waste, about 20,000 of recycling. Over the course of the last couple of years, I've been working with City of Mesa Director of Solid Waste on a joint concept, a regional concept, to go out to bid together with our volumes. With regards to that, we started to talk with Scottsdale as well as Tempe, who now are interested, and we've developed an IGA with our attorneys to go out to bid, hire a consultant, put about 500,000 tons of waste out on the street, and hopefully secure some very good pricing. Number 14 is the Waste Management Renewal. We're taking about 5% of our waste volume to Waste Management Transfer Station. The contract is asking to go month to month, how, since we're going out for an IGA for disposal. Once the pricing comes in, we'd have the ability to stop that contract and go with the new contract. And then 15 is also a renewal with Republic Waste Services at their waste transfer station.
Councilmember Cooper?
Assuming that a regional deal can be made, how flexible are the other cities in being able to, what's the status of their contracts? And how soon would we be able to get into a new contract ourselves?
Okay. Actually, it's all over the board, bless you. Gilbert, 50% of our waste volume is available now. That's why we're doing month to month, which is about 60,000 tons. And the city of Tempe's going 120,000 tons is available at the end of December. However, I believe they may do an extension with waste management for a short term until the IGA is complete and the consultant has the proposals to us. The city of Mesa has a contract for 90% of their waste to go to Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian Community up to 2015, and as does Scottsdale. And Scottsdale's hauling about 130,000 tons of MSW. I can provide this. This is a summary. I could provide each to the council if they wish, and it shows their recycling volumes as well. Hand it out.
Councilmember Ray?
Lou, is there any initial ideas as to what the cost on this would be? Or is it, where does that stand?
Yes, sir. My, our initial thought in discussion was about $40,000 for the consultant to come in and put this together. However, with the council communication, each city, we decided to go ask our councils to appropriate 25,000, just in case it does go higher than that. But we would have to meet as a committee to exceed spending more than $10,000.
And is there any forecasted savings yet by doing this?
Well, if you look at the sheet, you can see, one of the things that a lot of the other cities always ask is what is Lou Anderson paying at the transfer station? We're actually paying 2247. We're hoping to get into the 20s. So $2 at 100,000 tons, that's 200,000 a year. When I brought the original contract with waste management and republic services to council, November 3 of last year, I committed to saving 71,000. We're on track, and we're actually going to save about 76,000. So it's, I think it's a great investment. I'm hoping to be in the 20. I'm not sure if we'll get sub 20 tipping fees, but with that amount of volume, we have two of the largest haulers in the nation that are here in our region that have landfills. We also have some small private haulers that have some disposal capacity, so... And then, of course, Salt River could bid. The Salt River, Pima, Maricopa folks could also bid. So we're hoping to get into the 20 range.
Councilmember Cook?
Lou, are there other municipalities, maybe not in Arizona, but around the country, that have adopted a model similar to what you're proposing? Because I'd be kind of curious to understand, I mean, I like the regional idea, but is there someone that, or another, you know, group of municipalities that have done this in the past or doing it now that we can learn, you know, lessons that have worked or not worked?
Right. Not in the solid waste industry. However, I've watched over the last 10 years of my career here at Gilbert, police and fire collaborating with Mesa, and the regional collaboration seems to be something that all the mayors and all the cities want to participate in, as well as getting that buying power. So I haven't seen it on a national scale as far as solid waste goes. However, back in 2004, 2005, there was a company, and some of us on, and some of us on council may remember, that had a concept of us buying into a future landfill. And that was kind of maybe one of the things that started this in generating my idea on this, but I think it's a, going to work out very well for our city.
Thank you. Thank you, Lou. That's 13, 14, 15. Councilmember Cook on 16.
All right. The only question I had was, I know that this was funded in 2012, and I guess because of the delays and certain things that have changed, I'm assuming there were funds that were dedicated for this.
Yes, sir, we have it.
Are these the funds, are we transferring them from 2012 into 2013? Is that how this is working?
No, sir. This is actually a fiscal year 13 request, and it was budgeted for this year. The replacement of these two vehicles is just based on schedule and the cost of the maintenance on these two automated side loaders. What we have done on this change order is, this is a exact same vehicle that we purchased last year, and the contractor is actually providing us the same pricing as they did last year. So we tagged on essentially to our own purchase, if you will. So we bought one ASL last year, which was a replacement vehicle. This year, we have two replacement ASLs in the budget, and the vendor is honoring the same last year pricing at 257. These were budgeted. We do have a replacement fund. The replacement fund is very healthy. The fund is about $8.5 million at this time.
Thank you. And then 17. Councilmember Cook, that would be Nicole, please. Did you have 17?
No.
Okay. All right. The, Susan was the, we talked earlier about an hour ago on one of the items. Has that been discussed yet? Okay. While you're looking at that, I, I know we're trying not to do public hearing, so I'm not setting a good example, but I wanted to ask one question on number 31, and I think, Melanie, that would be for you. This is not to have the presentation, it is more the timing that I was looking at in the council communication. So the concept here is to take our HR cap and divide it into HR and to the cultural arts. And that's what 31 does. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes. The intent is to split the commissions and then move forward with the recruitment and filling of the boards, but we want them to be able to function and continue their role as a commission until we can do the recruitment and fill those roles. So we put in a date of, that the ordinance will become effective February 1st. That gives the clerk's office time to recruit and fill the positions that are needed for both of the boards.
And you just about answered the question I was going to ask, the timeline. And so we put February 1st, if we're not ready, at least we'll have some flexibility, but that's what we're targeting, is February 1st to be ready.
Mayor, councilmembers, yes. And we do anticipate that we would be ready. We will be, I will be bringing forth to you, after Thursday, we'll bring another council communication indicating the desires of the current board, which will then highlight how many openings that we have, and then we can progress forward.
Okay. Thank you. And Susan, which agenda item was it? Mark, if you could give the council a quick overview on number 10, please.
Mayor, councilmembers, Mark Warren, interim Public Works Director. Item number 10 is an agreement with Salt River Project that will allow us to wheel the 1 megawatt of power that we get annually from the Parker Davis Project. Back some years ago in '08, the Parker Davis Power was allocating additional power to agencies, which Gilbert applied for and was able to obtain 1 megawatt. It's a 20-year agreement through 2028. That was only a piece of it. Once that agreement was obtained, there needed to be a wheeling agreement with the power, a power company, which SRP is the agency that does most of the power generation or supply here in Gilbert. And they service our two water treatment plants as well as other water reservoirs, essentially. They were the predominant power supplier for Gilbert, so they became the obvious agency to coordinate with on this agreement. So essentially, what we do is they get the power allocation, but then Gilbert gets the benefit of the 1 megawatt of power. So this was an agreement that went for five years. This is going to be a two-year extension, which is going to allow SRP to align all of their related agreements such as this. And then there will be five-year extensions following this that will get us through the 20 years that we get the 1 megawatt of power.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Any questions? We wanted to make sure council was aware of that, and thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I'll just add that the town is saving some money, considerable savings, as a result of this agreement.
Always good to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Before we move to agenda item number two in the study session, we have had a lot occur, and not to get into too many details, but we, from an economic development standpoint, there was a nice email that went out that talked about rankings. Two of the rankings were Gilbert-specific, and we were aware of the 33rd and the 5th. The other eight, we're talking about both Phoenix and Arizona in areas that we have really started to shine, and I think speaks highly of what's happening with our state and recovery, and Arizona doing very well in the country. We did have Seshma Site Selectors last week, representing Gilbert, also had a nice event with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. I mentioned to the council that I also had a chance last week to go to the San Carlos Apache Tribe Administration Office and meet with Chairman Rambler, and that was very positive, and he wishes us the best with our Gilbert days, and they have something similar the week before that is their annual celebration that we're invited to attend if we're available. As far as even today, some of us in the room had the chance to attend the Environmental Technology Center opening at the Chandler-Gilbert Community College. And a great event, a great regional opportunity to have SRP involved with the project there and the community. And then, Ben, to your family that lives in that Highland Park Elementary School area, I did attend as part of Red Ribbon Week, the sixth grade class, Mrs. Bray's class, and they were just fantastic. No wonder you think that's the best elementary school in all of Gilbert. The last thing that I may mention, well, two things. Mayor's Breakfast for the Arts, Thursday morning at the Higley Center for Performing Arts. And look forward to a STEAM, an extension of STEM, a STEAM presentation. And then, this is kind of a segue to arts. It's a current event. We love our town manager. He's a good sport. The bet with the mayor on which National League team would win the championship, it's now been settled, and it is the town manager who will be doing the solo. It's not official, but it's potential at the next art walk, a week from Saturday, November 3rd. So we'll make sure everyone knows in the papers and the news stations and so forth, but looking forward to that event. And do I need to ask now by proclamation to have town staff prepare the statement that the official World Series team of the town of Gilbert is the San Francisco Giants? Or is that inappropriate?
That's inappropriate.
Okay. I better get back to the regular agenda. Before we do move to agenda item number two in the study session, was there anything else in preparation for Thursday night? Councilmember Cooper?
This is under current events, maybe. Tomorrow morning is a, one of our quarterly morning with merchants meetings in the Heritage District. It'll be at Art Intersection at 7:30 in the morning. We welcome, of course, all of the merchants from the downtown area, but anybody else that's interested in what's happening in the Heritage District and beyond. So thank you.
Thank you. So it's at Art Intersection, 7:30 AM. Thank you. Thank you. So, it's at Art Intersection, 7:30 a.m. Thank you. Anything else? Agenda item number two in the study session is a discussion on the budget calendar and expectations for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. Don, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Dawn Irvine. I'm the Budget Manager here for the town of Gilbert. Just wanted to take a few brief moments with you this afternoon to talk about the upcoming budget process. We did meet with council at the August Retreat and go through some of the key areas of emphasis for the budget process itself in the upcoming year. With that, briefly, we'll be looking at fine-tuning the results of the zero-based budget process from last year, but really emphasizing the five-year plans for all of the funds, looking primarily at what those known needs are over the course of the next five years and ensuring that we're planning accordingly. Much of what you'll see coming up on the calendar that comes before the mayor and council will begin, especially in the month of February. So, coming into February, that's where council will start to see more of reports back. But, we wanted to start off the year with touching base with the council and looking to see what type of expectations the council might have of the budget process to ensure that we're able to meet those. We had intended with the calendar to start off with a July and August budget report so far for the current results of this fiscal year. I unfortunately had failed to take into account the fact that with the changes in the departments, that those reports, those particular categories that are pulled out of the system needed to be modified as well. So, we'll be bringing that back at the next council meeting, and at that point in time, we'll have a full quarter of information for mayor and council to review. What I can tell you at this point in time, on the expenditure sides, we are, just as expected, departments are doing very well in staying within their budgets, keeping to overall what was approved through the budget process, and very similarly aligned to the spending patterns from last year, which we wanted to get the budget closer to what we're actually seeing in behaviors. And council will see that as we come forward with the quarterly reports next month. What I can also tell you about the revenues, particularly on the general fund side, is that our sales tax numbers continue to increase, and we're very thankful for that. I like to use the word cautiously optimistic, and I will continue to do so, but for some specific reasons here. One thing I do want to highlight is that you will be seeing that so far in the first quarter of the fiscal year, while we had projected that sales tax would increase by about $2 million this year over last year's total, we've actually seen and realized that $2 million in the first three months. We don't expect that that's going to be something that you can straight-line across the course of the next year, because we'll start to compare to some of those numbers where we saw some of those increases at the end of last year. But, even with that optimistic news, there is a large component of that that is attributable to retail, and we'll focus on that, and we'll look at the amount of that that we can attribute to an ongoing purpose. But, we're also looking at the amount that is directly correlated with the construction market, and Gilbert has seen a lot of construction activity here. That's not a sustainable activity here as we approach build-out, and so, we'll be looking at what we can consider an ongoing portion of that and what we can consider a one-time. So, we'll come back with more detail on that moving forward. Now, with that information in mind, wanted to, again, look at what council can expect from staff over the next few months, any additional expectations that council might have of staff, so that we can make sure that we arrange the process to meet those expectations, and then talk about some of those high-level areas that we want to accomplish through the course of the budget process. When we looked at the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 1213, we had some key areas that we were trying to emphasize. The budget was adopted this year emphasizing economic development with the idea that we would be growing ourselves out of the issues that we face today by focusing very strategically on some of those economic development opportunities, and the budget we have in place reflects that. We focused on personnel, on recruitment and retention, as well as what we call developing stellar performers. There's definitely been an interest expressed in continuing to maintain a lean workforce, having the best possible service at the lowest possible cost, and one of the ways in which we do that is ensure that our staff is professionally developed and that those professional development opportunities are not only extended to them, but expected of them to maintain that superior level of service. We looked at technology. Now, one of the things that we started with last year that we're starting again this year, of course, is looking at our strategic initiatives. One of those strategic initiatives is to be a technology leader. Well, one of the things that we had to notice right off the bat is that we actually have technology risks. And so, one of the areas of emphasis for this year was to start mitigating some of those technology risks, and the budget that you adopted for this year addresses that, to make sure that we can then move forward to become a technology leader. And then, finally, we wanted to ensure that we were maintaining those core service levels here that the town provides. I gave you that as some background to open it up for some discussion here as we move into the next fiscal year. Again, the council's adopted strategic initiatives. The staff is moving forward to implement those strategic initiatives, but we want to make sure that we do so strategically, that we are, in fact, emphasizing and focusing our efforts to be as effective as we possibly can.
Vice Mayor Sins.
Dawn, you talked about it, and we've discussed it over the past year. The good news about the construction being above budget, how are we accounting for that excess over, you know, these construction sales tax numbers, so we don't put it into the recurring budget, but we use it for one-time expenditures?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Sins, that's an excellent question. When we look at our sales tax information, we actually break it out by category. Now, some of the information we can't report out on simply because there are too few vendors for us to be able to report out without releasing proprietary information, but we actually do look at it at that granular of a level. So, when we're doing our projections, both for the current year and especially on the long-term plan, we project out the construction sales tax very differently than we project out the retail. And the budget that we have in the current fiscal year, the ongoing amount, actually reflects a decline in construction and an increase in retail. We are seeing the increase in retail. We're not seeing the decline in construction, and that's okay, as we discussed when we adopted that budget. We wanted to adopt the ongoing level of construction sales tax, and the increases that we would see beyond that for these spikes in construction could go towards one-time purchases.
Anything else? Councilmember Peterson?
Vice Mayor Sins actually kind of touched on what I was, this is a topic we've talked about a number of times, but just to have a tool where we can compare what we would consider one-time revenues and one-time expenses versus ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses. And so, you're saying we're developing, you're going to come back to us with more information about that and how those match up, and when would we see that?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, staff has actually been talking extensively about the best way to go about that. I will tell you that getting into explicit levels of detail can be very difficult, because not every purchase comes by and actually says this was a one-time purchase or this was an ongoing purchase. But, at the budget level, we absolutely have that information. As each of the departments budgeted for the upcoming or the current fiscal year, they looked at what their ongoing needs are, what we've in the past called a base. We didn't establish a base, but we did look at what are ongoing needs, and we looked at specifically what are some of those one-time needs. So, we can compare based on what the budget was, and we can go back on some of those areas. We can look at each and every transaction specifically and ask those questions, but it would be difficult to pull that directly out of the system. Long way of saying, at a very general level, but I believe with enough precision to give you exactly what you need, we'll be able to say that this much is attributable to ongoing, this much is attributable to one-time.
I guess my follow-up to that is, how are we looking? In other words, how much one-time is going to ongoing? How much of that unsustainable do we have? And that's what I'm kind of looking for.
And Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I can answer that for you right now. One of the things that we were able to do for this very budget year was ensure that we were not putting one-time revenues towards ongoing needs. So, every item in the budget that is an ongoing expense, such as salaries and personnel costs, leases, anything that we anticipate needing to do for the duration of that particular area of service, is funded by an ongoing corresponding revenue source. The only thing that we funded with one-time revenues were those one-time needs, and that would be something like anything from buying a chair for a new position through actually building a capital project.
I guess what would be helpful for me, and I don't know if there's going to be a separate place in the budget, but somewhere that it identifies maybe kind of a total of what were our one-time revenues versus expenses as a part of the report, where we can kind of see what that looks like. I don't know. Is it separated out that way, so it's easily identifiable for us?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we can easily separate out the one-time versus ongoing budgeted items and be able to correspond to the revenues. The revenues, we track very, in a great deal of detail, the level of one-time versus ongoing revenues, and so, we can provide you with a percentage of those as well. And the follow-up to that, you had asked about when, if council would like to see that. We can, we'll certainly be able to incorporate that into the forecast, which comes back to council in March, and we can have some additional discussion in the meantime as we bring back the quarterly budget report at the next council meeting.
Vice Mayor Sins?
Dawn, talking about the one-time, pretty much the last three years, we've underfunded our replacement funds, primarily our vehicle replacement fund. Are we using any of this one-time then to replenish those funds and put them back where they should be?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Sins, that's absolutely something that we can do and restore those funds. What we are doing currently is analyzing the level to which we need those funds to be, and staff is looking at each one of those separately. So, for example, on the water and wastewater side, where we have set aside those repair and replacement funds, to what level do we actually need those funds, and how do we get there, and we'll develop that plan. On the fleet side, we want to do the same thing with our fleet. How do we want to fund those on a regular basis, ensure that we have that funding set aside, and we're even looking at items such as replacement computers and such, and so, we're looking at each of those areas separately. What you'll see right now is that we're trying to develop that process. We absolutely recognize the need for that and the importance of that, but we want to make sure that we do it correctly.
It'd be good to have an analysis and come back and tell us, what should we have in the replacement fund?
Exactly.
Are we over or under, or what, some of this one-time funds, should it be allocated to that? And I think that's more of a policy decision on what level.
Absolutely. There are many components to that. A big part of that is, on the capital side, is going to be what we're doing with the infrastructure plans, and Public Works has been undergoing those, water, wastewater, and streets and transportation. We have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan as well as circulation plans. All of those will be incorporated into our policy that we bring forward to council for repair and replacement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Councilmember Cooper, please.
Just, you mentioned parks, master plan, and it just caught my interest that we may have some needs down the road for new parks that won't be funded as well as they have been in the past, and so, we may want to have a discussion in the future about some set-asides for that as well from some of these one-time income sources. The other question I had for you is, we're looking at next year's budget, the strategic initiatives that we've identified as a council drive action at the staff level, and staff is working hard on wildly important goals, and we appreciate that, and I'm very thankful that those are moving forward. As we look out a year, how will the budget tie into possibly not yet identified wildly important goals? Because I don't know if the, how do the processes sync up for the next fiscal year?
Mayor, Councilmember Cooper, that's actually a very important reason why we're here today, because we want to start having that discussion now. As we look at those strategic initiatives, what are the areas in particular that council would like us to see us emphasize? Are there specific directions regarding accomplishments of those that we need to incorporate into the budget process? Because you're absolutely right. The budget needs to reflect what we are trying to accomplish through the course of those strategic initiatives, and we'll develop our wildly important goals accordingly.
Vice Mayor Sins?
Councilmember Cooper just tweaked me on one thing. We've got these wildly important goals, or the town goals, or whatever you want to call them, and I don't know how we're doing on them. Who do we report them to? I think, and if we need to get three signatures, we will, but I think we ought to start having a periodic, even at a study session, report on two or three of them, each study session, so we can see how we're doing as a municipality and an organization.
Patrick, please comment on that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Sins, we do list those on our website. We've created a dashboard on the town's website in which any resident can go. It's got relevant information on them, as well as some very simple-to-understand indicator lights. Green light, we're on track. Yellow light, red light, we're behind schedule, and blue light, it's complete. We're going to update those on a quarterly basis.
So, even a Navy guy could understand them?
That's right.
Okay.
And maybe, what would be helpful? I appreciate. Left ear, I didn't hear that.
Do you want me to?
No, I don't want, what might be helpful is, when it's updated on a quarterly basis, why don't we just take a moment in a study session to mention that and maybe even display it real fast, not to get into detail unless there is one that, unless there might be one that would make sense for town leadership to provide an update on. But, I think that I was aware, and I have gone out and looked at them, but that's a good reminder for the council and a good reminder for us to be paying attention to them. Councilmember Cooper?
I just wanted to get back to where you were, what you said, maybe one of the purposes of this discussion was, and I am trying to understand what you would need from us beyond kind of the discussion we had at the retreat and our general emphasis areas. I know you're asking for something here, and I'm not sure I'm prepared to provide that any more than we have maybe in the past couple of months in retreats and things like that. So, is there something specific you need, or how can we help you?
Thank you for your question, sir. The reality is, if nothing has changed since then, we'll continue moving on just as we are. This is an opportunity for council, given some additional time to think through the discussion in August, any additional conversations or occurrences, and then, given what we're seeing right now in the revenues, which I've just now briefly given you a hint of, if there's additional direction or additional specific information that council wanted to clarify as a result of the August meeting.
Thank you. Dawn, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Agenda item number three is an update on the water reporting and compliance audit.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis. Members of the council, Nicole Daly, Assistant to the Town Manager. I am here this evening to introduce to you our guest presenter. We have Kevin Dixon, who is the Director of Environmental Compliance for CH2M Hill. He was one of our onsite personnel who completed our compliance and reporting audit. So, this evening, Kevin will be presenting the results of that audit to you. And as you'll recall, back in September, when we contracted with CH2M Hill, there were three specific areas we were contracting for. One was staffing augmentation to get us through this time to ensure that we're fully operational. Two was a management and operational audit, and third was this compliance and reporting audit. This was the first piece that was completed as part of the contract, and so, tonight will be the technical focus of this. And then, as we're moving through the last stages of the existing contract, we'll be coming back to you probably at the November 15th meeting with the results of the other pieces of what the contract was to do. So, unless there's any questions for me, I would be more than happy to ask Kevin to come up, and he'll go ahead and begin his presentation.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. As Nicole mentioned, my name is Kevin Dixon. I am the Director of Environmental Compliance for CH2M Hill's Operating and Maintenance Business Group, and the purpose of my presentation this afternoon is just to summarize for you the results of our recently completed audit. And the audit actually had two components to it. There was, we did an audit on overall drinking water compliance, and then, a separate audit on the laboratory, and I wanted to just cover some specifics about each of those. For the drinking water compliance audit, we began with review of all of your compliance data for the period from 2010 through 2012, and we chose that interval because should there be an audit by an external agency such as the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, they would come in and probably look at three years of your records. So, we wanted to try and match up with exactly what they might take a look at. We also evaluated compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act, and the Safe Drinking Water Act is the principal piece of legislation that's been enacted by Congress that dictates how drinking water systems are to be operated and managed. And we did, as part of all that, we did a detailed review of your monitoring plans, which is basically the strategy that you've developed for which is basically the strategy that you've developed for when and where samples are collected. We took a look at your compliance monitoring and reporting to make sure that it met the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. We looked at each of your monthly operating reports for a number of years, and these are basically a document that gets sent each month to both Maricopa County and the ADEQ that kind of summarizes the operations that take place at the water treatment plants, out in the distribution system, and then also with your well supplies. We looked at certain areas of your customer interactions, specifically how it is you interact with customers if they have a complaint. And then also, we evaluated your consumer confidence reports, which is the annual water quality report you issue to each of your customers before July 1 of each year. We looked at the procedures that you utilize for calibration of online equipment at the surface water treatment plants. And finally, we looked at the fluoridation and disinfection practices at the surface water treatment plants, from the standpoint of the analytical procedures that you use to measure both fluoride and chlorine, and then also to make sure that the levels that you have in the water that are in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act.
Kevin, Vice Mayor Sins has a question.
I have a couple, though. The monthly operating reports, you said they go outside the town to state and county?
That's correct.
What's the internal distribution?
They're internally distributed to the members of the production staff, to the water quality staff, and then I believe they also get sent to Mark, Mark Horn.
So they don't go above the Public Works Director?
That's correct.
I think, I don't know what your thought is, but if we're sending stuff externally, I think our manager at least ought to get a copy and view as to what's going on over there.
And I wouldn't disagree with that. My understanding is that position is open right now?
Well, not the manager position.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless because the Cardinals lost the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Town Manager, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. That, I mean, that certainly, that's a matter I think that you folks would have to decide.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Sins, as part of this process, we will be doing a total review of our operating procedures, or we currently are, and we'll bring forward some recommended changes.
Okay. And then you talked about the fluoridation and disinfection and these compliance and monitoring reports. Again, is that part of the monthly operating report? Because the concern I had when this issue was surfaced was, we're testing the water, I don't know how many times a day or what the frequency is. And why didn't we detect that there was no fluoride in it? And why wasn't it reported? So I don't know. Maybe you'll get into that in a little bit, or I'm getting ahead of us?
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Sins, part of what's going on with the management and operational audit is a review of to whom these reports are distributed, how have they been distributed, including both internally to the water operation as well as within town management. So it's our understanding this is a relatively new practice to distribute to that wider group. And so what we can look into is what was being given before. But what we've really chosen to focus on with CH2M is what needs to be distributed now based on what we know and moving forward. And so we'll take into account the recommendation to distribute that up to the town manager's office.
Councilmember Cook?
Could you distribute maybe the first report to the council so that we can just kind of take a look at it when you do have one?
Vice Mayor, or Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, absolutely. We can provide samples of what we've had working within the plants for the last couple of weeks.
Because I think we're interested in what is in that monthly operating report, because without, unless you have an example here on the screen, I think we'd be interested at least looking at what would, what would it look like?
I don't this evening, but we'll make sure that gets distributed.
Thank you. Continue.
The second piece of the audit was the laboratory audit. And here, we reviewed the laboratory procedures, the equipment that's in use, and then the record-keeping practices of the laboratories. We also evaluated the data that you receive from your contract laboratory, Test America. And as part of the review, we spent a good deal of time looking at the chain of custody procedures, which is basically the paperwork trail from the time that a sample is collected through its processing to its final analysis. The quality assurance, I'm sorry, the quality assurance and, oh, it's not, there we go. Sorry about that. The quality assurance and quality control procedures that are practiced at the laboratory, the analytical equipment that you have in the labs, and making sure that it's being operated properly and maintained, the data handling and reporting procedures, to be sure that they are in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. And finally, the safety and chemical hygiene procedures practiced in the labs, because in the laboratory analyses, you are using some hazardous chemicals. And so it's important that there's a tight safety program around those. So summarized here are the major findings of the drinking water compliance audit. And the major finding is that the town of Gilbert is in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. And that is, that's a major finding, and it's very significant. So I'd like to stress that again, that the town of Gilbert is in compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. More specifically, the town has satisfied all of the monitoring and reporting requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. You are in compliance with all of the maximum contaminant levels and action levels that are part of the Safe Drinking Water Act. And what the Safe Drinking Water Act is actually a compilation of individual rules that regulate individual contaminants or groups of contaminants. And for each of those, EPA establishes a level, if you're below that level, your water is considered safe for human consumption. So the good news is, is that all of the water that is being produced in the town of Gilbert meets all of those levels. And finally, the water treatment plants are being operated by highly qualified individuals in a manner consistent with the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act. As a result of our audit, we did make some recommendations, areas where we suggest for improvement. And these would be in the monitoring plans, and that basically just to be sure that the plans are a bit more specific, and that once they are completed, they're submitted for review and approval by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Record-keeping practices, there's room for improvement there in terms of the transparency as well as the organization of the records. Interdepartmental communications, we want to see there be a stronger dialogue between the folks that are operating the treatment plants, the water quality staff, the folks that are running the distribution system, as well as the people that are operating the wells. And in communications with customers, we're suggesting some improvements to the data table in your consumer confidence report, as well as to the correspondence that goes to the customers after a, after we've been to their residence as a result of a complaint, or if they've had an analysis performed by the town, so that the correspondence would include the results of that and provide them with a clear explanation of what the results mean. We're also recommending a follow-up audit in six months to verify that the recommendations that we've, that we have put out here have been implemented. And it would help you to be prepared for what we found out is going to be a sanitary survey in 2013 by ADEQ. And a sanitary survey is basically a very comprehensive look at the operation of the drinking water system. And we've structured the audit that we perform for you along the very same lines of a sanitary survey. So our feeling is that if the recommendations we made here are implemented, the town will be in very good shape in preparation for that survey. And then we're also recommending that there be an in-house compliance audit at a frequency of every three to five years. And the beauty of your system is that you have two surface water treatment plants, so you could have the staff from the Santan Vista plant, for example, conduct an audit of operations at the North Plant, and then vice versa. In addition to the benefits of the in-house audit, that also provides an opportunity for cross-training of the, of the staffs. For the major findings of the laboratory audit, we found that the laboratories are well-equipped, and they're being run by highly qualified operators and chemists. And we also noted that the town of Gilbert has the capability to conduct more analyses in-house and rely less upon the contract laboratory, which is Test America. And we looked at this from two standpoints, current capability as well as future capability. Currently, a lot of samples are sent to Test America, for which actually you have the capability to run those samples in-house now. So we've made the recommendation that those samples all be run by your chemists. And in the future, with some additional instrumentation, the laboratory would then have the capability to run almost all of the analytical tests that are required by the Safe Drinking Water Act, which I think would result in a significant savings to the town, as well as yield enhanced results. Similar to the compliance audit, we have some recommendations for improvement with the lab audit, specifically in the area of quality assurance and quality control. And this would be around both your in-house procedures, as well as the procedures that are performed by your contract lab, Test America. Some improvements to record-keeping procedures, and this is specifically in the areas of the chain of custody, as well as the logbooks that are maintained at each of the labs. Data handling and reporting procedures, just to be sure that there's validation of the integrity of the data that is produced both in-house and by your contract lab. And then some minor improvements to safety and chemical hygiene procedures. We also, when we were taking a look at the complete body of data that is being produced, noticed that there are a number of redundant analyses that are being performed, and some of them are for process control, which is always a good thing. But what we're advocating is that there be a better-defined strategy for those analyses so that it kind of streamlines the procedure for you. We're also recommending that in the fourth quarter, there be some additional training for the lab staff, the operators, the chemists, and the technicians, and basically to bring them up to date with the most current procedures and regulations. And finally, to hire and train a lab technician and a chemist to fill the current open vacancies. And that summarizes our findings.
You did emphasize a couple of significant points. We appreciate that. And our town manager mentioned that there's additional analysis of moving forward that will take place, and we thank you for being part of the team and providing this information.
My pleasure.
To the town council, agenda item number four, discussing efficiencies, effectiveness, any discussion today?
Yeah, I think we ought to have an hour discussion on that.
Okay. Noted. Oh, I didn't hear a second. We do have an executive session on Thursday at 4:45, as a reminder. And I think I'll do something we haven't done in the past, but I'll put it under current events. Amanda, if you could come forward, please. And any other team member in the room who is here for the first time? This is just a chance right here, Amanda, to, I don't know if the whole council knows that you've started, if you could give us your name and what your assignment is.
Sure. I'm Amanda Elliott, and I'm working with the Economic Development Department for marketing and communications, so glad to be part of the team.
It was interesting, last week at the site selector conference in Tucson, a room filled with site selectors from all over the country walked in, and I was wondering, which city are you from? And then Amanda, I heard, was with the town of Gilbert. So she's on the team, and welcome. It's good to have you here. And was there, I'm looking around, everyone else looks familiar, but am I missing anyone? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Amanda. On that note, study session adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and participation.